Be over here before Board of Selectmen goes here.
Come on down, Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
Not sharing a microphone with you. Bring your own microphone.
No, Nick's by the meal.
Lisa Berg to the stage.
Board of Selectmen are first. You need an extra chair.
Um, Nick will find somebody. How are you, sir?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
I need a taller chair.
Taller chair?
I'm a princess, don't I?
She is a princess.
We know. Nobody doubted it.
Well, all your hair after all these years.
Is she gonna go down there? Do you wanna go up here?
You took it.
No, I'm gonna sit down because the Board of Selectmen should be first and then Nick and the knee and the brunt.
So in the past, have we had the whole board of selection?
Yes.
And just the chair of the board of finance?
Yeah.
I hope Brian knows that.
The word of Ed.
Dr. Carver's in the house.
Hey, Chris, do you have an office, an office chair or some, I can't sit in the hole and write. Do you have a taller chair? Yeah, like a, like a office chair or something.
Maybe a throne?
A throne? I'm a princess. What's that?
Hey, there you go.
Are they? Oh, you got me one? Awesome.
You're stealing, now you're stealing chairs out of teacher's room?
Yeah.
Much better. I can't, I was just like.
We can lucky if that's the only thing I stole.
Several.
Typically.
I had shoulder surgery, so I can't be, you know.
Oh, do you want me to move down?
No, I, it's, no. I'm good.
I would love a word if you're up.
He wants scotch and water.
And I know what you're.
Where's the chair go?
It's the art room back there.
Out of my chair if you grab me.
I do.
I can see it.
She looks like that covered up. That's a good thing.
I love it.
Just a little. You don't have to look.
You were.
I did some a little discipline.
They're supposed to be, um, releasing the grants. In like the next week or so. Bayback. Oh, we have to say? Yeah. Yes.
So I've got a contract.
Which funding for? There, no, there's two. There's different projects.
Okay, okay.
Um, there's the, there's the, the, he might be working on AHX1.
Yep, that sounds right.
Okay.
Okay, there are two. Okay, floating around. Okay, only one is hitting the list so far.
I know.
And this one, and this one has to be done by the.
No, this is Bethel. We're down, yeah.
Right, we're working.
This one has to be done during the summer, Christine, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
Right, it's got some.
I have one of those. Yeah, that's got a kick.
You want a skip tooth?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, she's got the yellow chip.
I have a press button. I got this automatic start.
Yeah, yeah.
I got the automatic start.
She's just ignoring what she's saying.
I got the auto start.
Do you file your own rakes or what do you do?
File my own rakes.
Yeah, rakes, rakes.
How often do you file the rake?
You gotta sharpen them.
Oh, I change the, uh, the chain all the time. Yeah, I get a new chain. I don't file it down.
Do you use a skip tooth or a regular rake?
A regular chain.
Why? You think that's faster?
Actually, no, skip tooth is better.
Much faster.
It's faster, yeah.
You can handle this.
Oh, yeah. You're forgetting to work Bethel Power.
Right, exactly.
I did, on Saturdays for four hours a day.
They just wanted you to smile and make sales.
After the hurricane.
When, when did you work for?
You don't remember?
No.
I worked for Mark. I had a part-time job, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah. I don't know. I usually knew everything. Saturday mornings. I actually have a Bethel Power sweatshirt and everything.
There was this, uh.
I'm trying to be sure I have the right resolutions in front of me.
Always trying to get men from over the position and I go, Natalia, you're gonna take this one, man. With that, middle age, man, I'm not doing.
So you know it, you'll be getting our credit card, yeah. Wherever you need to go.
Um, Nick?
Yes?
Paul just walked in. Are you gonna be able to control yourself tonight?
Which one?
Zikowski.
Oh, Zikowski. I, I watched my crowd. Right, because I said, well, I have clean soup because I know Paul. Me, you, Paul. And everybody was like, man.
Dino's, Dino's gonna make the nomination.
Oh, good. Okay, so you took care of it?
Yeah, because I, I thought I was gonna make it, but then Dan said, no, you're sitting up here. I'm like, oh, okay.
You can still make it. You still get to vote.
What?
Still get to vote even though you're up here.
Well, I would have at least worn a shirt.
You look fine.
You look mighty about it.
You gotta call me.
You're, um, advertising. If you had a good company, man.
I just got him a big construction.
Oh, good. Turn this on because. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Betting on my skin.
Right, right, that's it. Hi, Scott, how are you? Good, thank you.
You're happy, you're happy with your chair now?
What's that? I know.
Queen Berg needs a special chair.
It's on, yeah.
She's taller than I am.
I can't, I don't.
Good area.
It's got the resolution.
Yeah, this one, excellent.
Where are the crocs, man? Where are the crocs?
You have to notice. We just have a resolution. There are new, different, kind of, we say the shall, but as a place to consider.
Jenny, you only care about the person.
Hey, Dino.
What's that on the capital?
How far away?
You're the chairman.
A couple minutes.
Wow, you're the chairman.
Yeah, so you're gonna take care of it.
Already take care of it.
And you have a second?
Proud of you.
I'll ask.
Oh, Ted, Paul. If, if, yeah, um, yeah. Gotta make sure.
Bobby, Bobby's gonna do the, he's for Halloween? He's doing the Christmas. I said Bobby, it's like, it's Christmas. And he's gonna do, he's gonna do the pack.
Wow.
Made me so happy.
That's great. I go to bed at eight. Forgot my, my chair.
Lisa, Lisa, just one, no, you don't need to.
Thanks. You got my back?
No.
High school.
Oh, my gosh. See what I got? Wow. See, you make a wave and you get an ocean.
Rachel, make sure you put it in the special section.
Very welcome.
I have mine. Thank you.
I love a wave, thank you.
So, you got it.
He's like a wingman.
He's my wingman.
You lost your wingman.
We're down New Orleans. Anyway. Anyway, we're down New Orleans, right?
I do.
And, um, St. Patrick's. That's you, John. Day down there was pretty good.
You know how the facility is for? Takes her a polar branch and all the corporate headquarters.
Do I do my banking? I, I know we're breaking some tip, but obviously. The girls. Yes. What do I need to do? I'm not gonna go, but I can.
Anyone with a.
Anyone with. I won't even bother. My buddies, I have flashburn.
I remember when this place used to be happened. Oh, is it time? Nice, it's not a big time.
Good evening, everyone. If you would, if you take your seats, we'll get started. Please, uh, silence cell phones if you have them. Good evening. Uh, I'm Dan Carter for Selectmen of Bethel. I'd like to call to order, uh, the annual town meeting for Bethel, Connecticut for April 4th, 2024. Like to begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. So the first order of business tonight is to elect a moderator. Thank you. We have a floor open for nominations and Dan Carter has been, uh, nominated. Is there any, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Who's nomination? Oh, it's nomination.
Okay, declare nominations closed. Uh, with that, uh, we can declare the, uh, uh, Dan Carter's a nominee as, as the, uh, chair, excuse me, as a moderator, uh, by acclamation. Next up, we, uh, need to elect a secretary. Now, before we do this, traditionally, the town clerk is our secretary, but as Robert's rule says for a meeting, we actually have to elect that position. So with that, I put in Lisa Berg, our town clerk, as our first nomination. Do I have a second? Second by Paul Shanley. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? I declare nominations closed. And again, Lisa Berg is our secretary and, uh, that is by acclamation. Okay, so Lisa Berg, our town clerk, will now read the call.
Good evening. Notice of Bethel, Connecticut, notice of annual town meeting, town budget meeting. The legal voters of the town of Bethel, Connecticut and those persons entitled to vote therein are hereby notified to assemble at the annual town budget meeting to be held at the Bethel High School Auditorium, 300 Whittlesey Drive in Bethel, Connecticut, on Thursday, April 4th, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes to wit. Number one, to consider and take action upon a resolution to appropriate the sum of $37,707,097, which sum includes the town operating budget of $31,911,511. Debt service of $5,269,569 and the school, schools building a maintenance account of $526,017, as recommended by the Board of Finance as the total annual town operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024. Number two, to consider and take action upon a resolution to appropriate the sum of $54,751,132, as recommended by the Board of Finance as the annual Board of Education budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024. Number three, to consider and take action on a resolution to appropi, appropriate the amount not exceeding $1,800,000, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance for the purchase of a ladder truck. Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing and/or other appropriation as recommended by the comptroller to be reduced by grant funding, if any, available and approved for this purpose. Number four, to consider and take action on a resolution to appropriate an amount not exceed, not to exceed $1,600,000, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance for the purchase of real property and improvements thereon located at 159 Greenwood Avenue in Bethel, Connecticut. Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing and/or other appropriation as recommended by the comptroller to be reduced by grant funding, if any, available and approved for this purpose. Number five, to consider and take action on a resolution to transfer $500,000 from the tax stabilization fund to apply to revenue in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Number six, to consider and take action on the transfer of $362,478.45 of pro, of proceeds from the sales of 19, 20, 21, and 23 Trowbridge Drive to an interest-bearing account under the supervision of the Economic Development Commission to further support the maintenance of Francis J. Clark Business Park. Number seven, to authorize the first selectmen and the treasurer of the town of Bethel to borrow on short-term notes or loans, quote, "tax anticipation notes," un, end quote, in an amount not to exceed the aggregate of $6 million, for the purpose of paying current expenditures of the town of Bethel for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024, which tax anticipation, anticipation notes are to be repaid from anticipated tax revenues. Number eight, to consider and take action upon a resolution that tax on motor vehicles and personal property be collected in one or more than one installment. Number nine, to establish the date on which the machine vote on the annual town budget shall take place in accordance with the provisions of the Bethel Town Charter. Number 10, to do any and all things which may be legally required or appropriate to accomplish the above named purposes. Dated at Bethel, Connecticut, this 28th day of March, 2024. Board of Selectmen, Daniel E. Carter for Selectmen, Brian Turzian, Selectmen, Richard C. Strayton, Selectmen.
Thank you, Lisa. The first order of the agenda, uh, I'd like the town attorney, please, to read the first motion.
She'll stay right here?
Would you like to come up? Would you like to, there's fine, if you like.
This is the first resolution.
Read on.
Pursuant to the charter of the town of Bethel, shall the town of Bethel appropriate the sum of $37,707,097, as recommended by the Board of Finance as the total annual town operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, to be placed on the ballot for a townwide referendum machine vote.
I'd accept a motion for, uh, adoption. And a second, please.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Matt.
Gotcha.
Oh, Matt.
Who seconded? Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so we're up for discussion now. If you'd like to, uh, make comments on the motion on the floor, please step up to the mic and, uh, we'll hear your comments. I see no comments at this point. Last call. So I see no discussion. With that, I will try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? And that motion carries. The town attorney, would you please read the next motion, or excuse me, the next resolution?
Pursuant to the charter of the town of Bethel, shall the town of Bethel appropriate the sum of $54,751,132, as recommended by the Board of Finance as the annual Board of Education budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, to be placed on the ballot for a townwide referendum machine vote.
With that, I'd like a motion to accept the, we have a motion by Penny Kessler? And we have a second. If you state your name first, who was first out here? Okay, with that, uh, just like before, any discussion? If you'd like, uh, to add any comments, please step up to the microphone. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, Brad Colts, 1 Fairchild Drive. Um, I have a question about two bits of information that don't align and I'm confused about. The Connecticut EdSite website has a lot of information about various school systems, including ours, and they have, uh, data that shows that our operating expense for the schools will be $6.2 million in the current year, as opposed to the $53 million that was voted on. Um, and I'm wondering where this roughly $7.1 million discrepancy comes from. Um, I'd just like to understand that before I vote on doing it again. And if you have an anticipation of what, um, there might be is another one of those, um, different numbers for the current year that we're voting on. Thank you.
Please.
Great question. Um, so EdSite is, um, is a state database that calculates per people expenditures and it includes several factors. That includes our operating budget, so the, the 50, uh, some, yeah, $53 million this year, um, in terms of, uh, that, that what the town of Bethel, uh, puts towards. It also includes all grants that the district receives, so our, um, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV grants, which are all in our financial dashboards if you'd like to look. Um, there's a, there's a detailed expenditure of that on there. And it also includes income services. So those are services that we do our financial, uh, uh, report at the end of the year that come from the town, such as like the town maintenance budget, um, our SROs and our schools, uh, the, uh, the proportion of the salaries for our maintenance department. So, um, we, there's a, a report that, um, Mrs. Barry Riley's office, um, files over here. It's called the EFS. And happy to provide you a copy of it, but all of those combined together is what makes up the per people expenditure that you see. Pensions is another thing. Oh, go ahead.
There's $7 million in that?
Between grants and all of those pieces, yes. Our SROs, um, town maintenance, the proportion of it, um, yeah, and you've got to remember also, the last couple of years, it's also included our ARPESR grants. Those are part of that calculation. So, yes.
It also includes all the utilities that the town pays for the school buildings.
Sorry, thank you. Includes the utility cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will try your minds. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Would the, uh, town attorney please lead, excuse me, read the next resolution?
Yes, this is the third resolution. Shall the town of Bethel appropriate a sum not to exceed $1,800,000, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance for the purchase of a ladder truck? Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing and/or other appropriation as recommended by the comptroller to be reduced by grant funding, if any, available and approved for this purpose, to be placed on the ballot for a townwide referendum machine vote.
So with that, I'd like a motion to accept the resolution. And if you state your name, please. Matt Nickerbocker. Any seconds? I think we have Penny Kessler was first, or Tom Galliford?
Tom Galliford, I got it.
Okay, with that, uh, again, if there's any discussion, would you please step down to the microphone? Any questions? Seeing none? Going once? Feel like this is an auction. Going twice? Okay, with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Seeing none, abstentions? And motion carries. Uh, town attorney, could you please read the fourth resolution?
Shall the town of Bethel appropriate a sum not to exceed $1,600,000, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance for the purchase of the real property and improvements thereon located at 159 Greenwood Avenue in Bethel, Connecticut? Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing and/or other appropriation as recommended by the comptroller to be reduced by grant funding, if available, and approved for this purpose, to be placed on the ballot for a townwide referendum machine vote.
Thank you. Any discussion? As before, if you step down to the microphone?
Motion to accept.
I apologize. Yes, thank you. I like a motion to accept a resolution? And a second? So we have Paul Shanley and. James, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name? Thank you.
Okay, so with that discussion, if you'd like to have any discussion, please step down to the microphone. Come on there, Bob. I know you're thinking about it. And please state your name and, uh, your address for the record.
I'll bow down a bit.
Sorry about that. Usually, if Billy Michael's here to adjust it, unfortunately, he's.
That's okay. That's okay. Uh, there, there we go. Uh, my name is Jan DeBakker. I live at 7 Pleasant Street.
I need you to spell your last name for me.
D E B A K K E R.
Can you spell it? I'm sorry, the echo in here is terrible.
D E B A K K E R.
Got it. Thank you.
It's a weird one. Yeah, I'm just, uh, um, when I read about this proposal, um, to buy the Wells Fargo building, um, you know, uh, the, the arguments around it. What, what we had a lot of is, is, well, it, it could be parking. It, it could be green space, you know, it could be an addendum to the library. It's like all these things that would be nice to have in the future. What I want to draw especially the Board of Selectmen's attention to is that, right now, not very far from downtown, there is green space in Parloa Park. And I've been kind of beating this drum a little bit where, you know, the, the, the parking lot there is a potlouk mess. Uh, you know, there were bleachers there that were in such bad condition, they had to be taken away. There's steps going up to street level. The concrete is all cracked. Like, you know, it, it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's not, uh, an exaggeration to say it's falling apart. Thing is, uh, there's been a plan at the works to revitalize Parloa Park. Uh, we have been in the work since about 2019. Um, and, you know, we, we have a plan. We have drawings for it. I've seen it. Thing is, you know, we don't have the budget for it. And I've been making inquiries for it. People I've talked to, it's been like, oh, well, the town doesn't have a budget for this. Well, maybe the ARPA, ARPA grants. Nope, don't have that. Well, maybe the state can give a, can give a grant. So I went and wrote RAGIB. Well, not this year. Maybe next year. Better luck next time. Right? And the kind of money that we're talking about to fix up Parloa Park is in fact about $1.5 million. So I should say it is rather galling that after being poor-mouthed for a year about how no one has any money for this park, that the Board of Finance suddenly found $1.5 million to buy up the Wells Fargo building. So my proposition to you is actually that we let this resolution go, that we don't advance. that we don't advance it to the referendum, and that we actually use this money on the item that really needs the money, to fix up this park that's literally crumbling, instead of just nice-to-haves in the future. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. I'm Judy Novacek, 15 Pleasant Street. I'm Jan's neighbor up the street. I sort of have to disagree with him a little bit. The couple of questions that I had was, how much are we losing on the tax revenue from the building that's there, or the company that's there now? And I do have the question of what is going to be done with it? I heard one of the rumors going around, oh, we're going to put up parking meters. And that's kind of a strange thing to do on Greenwood Avenue. And then the comment was, well, it'll take care of all the people that are in the building next to it that doesn't have any parking spaces. And that was the way they were allowed to be built. And quite frankly, I don't think we need another one of those buildings in that lot. And I think it's a great idea that the town purchase the property. Thank you.
Thank you. So would you like me to answer the question about, I guess, the parking meter comment first? We've, we're in the middle of doing a parking and mobility study. And in that, we've talked about all kinds of things we'll do in the future with respect to possibly enforcing two-hour zones and things like that. At this time, there's no concrete plan to put in parking meters anywhere. And, you know, we've talked about it just kind of behind the scenes as an option someday. I don't think there's an app, like really appetite for that in the size of our town. And I don't think that was ever really the plan for this property, if that's helpful.
Hi, my name is Catherine Nielsen, I live at 1 Highland Avenue.
Can you hold on a second? I think the first selectman was still talking.
Oh, I thought you finished. I'm sorry.
Well, I did, I was going to ask if she wanted to hear more about the, I guess, short-term plan for the property.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, when we came forward with this idea of this concept, it certainly was looking out into the future ten, twenty years. The reason it was promoted is that we've done very little in the town to save property for something like an expansion of the library. And something where this property is very valuable to us because it's contiguous with our library property. So in the short term, we would look for options to rent the building, lease the building, hold on to the property for a period of time till we knew what we did with it. The benefits on the side are that we would keep that parking, and we preserve it as a municipal lot. And if we ever do decide as a town that we want to move forward with something, it would be through P&amp;Z and the town to decide what we would want to build on that property. So there's a little bit of a control option for the town. So that's why this has been pushed forward the way it has.
Well, there is no, there is no control with the planning and zoning because you're in the transportation district. And that really dictates what you're going to do, or what you're going to be able to do.
Jody, can you, Judy, can you come to the micro, can you just give her just one minute, please? Thank you.
If you depend on planning and zoning, you're going to lose the case because they're guided by the transportation district. And that's what limits, or that doesn't limit, it provides for all of the spaces that there are being created now on every single solitary piece of land that we have. And I think that it's crucial. And I guess one of the other things was, do you have any intention of moving any of the, the town offices over there? In case you, in case you ever, ever needed them? Or even the Board of Education?
It's interesting, all those things have come up in passing, believe it or not. Board of Ed, opportunities for senior center. You know, at the end of the day, I think, short term, you know, once we get together and look at this, there are many options. I think we'd want to do something with offsetting the cost. You mentioned the cost to the town. Right now, it would be twenty-five thousand a year is what the actual property taxes to the town. So ideally, we'd like to offset that with something, you know, in the short term. But, and as I said about the, this planning and zoning, you know, anything we do as a town goes through planning and zoning. But if the town owns the property, then we have, we have the ability to work together, decide what we want to do.
Not true. You still have to, you have to abide by...
Yeah, they still have to approve it.
You have to abide by the, by the transportation district rules.
And maybe we'll never do anything with it. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll use the library or expand, because the library is our number-one community center right now.
That's true, in addition to the senior center. And I would stand here and say that the senior center doesn't belong over there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you for that, I appreciate you...
My name is Catherine Willoughby Nielsen. I live at 1 Highland Avenue. And my problem is, I'm eighty-three years old, and I see nothing for seniors here. I mean, really. All of a sudden, just my taxes keep going up, and I see you guys getting all raises. I mean, how long have you been in office?
About a year and a half, not even.
The first year, how much was your raise?
This, this budget will raise the...
Your first year, you was in office, though?
There was, this was, this budget, there was no raise.
Twenty-thousand-dollar increase.
That's this year.
And this year is going to be a nine-thousand-dollar increase if you want.
No, this will be a twenty-thousand-dollar raise to the position of first selectman.
Alls I know is, I went over the, or senior citizens get the discount. I went over a few dollars, so I'm not even getting a penny off at eighty-three years, I'm eighty-three years old, and I'm getting nothing. I have, I mean, I have no kids at school. I have a house, I have to pay everything else, I'm on social security. What is they doing? I don't know.
So the first question is about the senior center?
Pardon?
The first part is the senior center, right?
I've been to the senior center.
Okay.
Not happy with it at all. First time I went to senior center, I wait, sit out in the hallway for a half hour while they were talking about what they had for lunch, and the people at work there were talking about what they had during the day and everything. So I finally got up, walked out, they wanted to help me, well, I walked out. Then I gave them another shot, six months later. I went down there, same thing happened. It's unbelievable. I finally gave them a shot, I went down once, I played bingo, and not one person, not even the person running the place, says hello to me. So I'm not, I really, I don't see what I'm getting at all from the channel vessel. And the roads are really getting bad. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment, again, Nick Ellis, the chairman of the Board of Finance. It was my idea for the raise for the first selectman. And I gave, and I gave it a lot of thought. It's because we're looking to bid for the position, and for a hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars in today's society doesn't get you anywhere. If we want to keep a quality guy there, or woman, I think the position... I never said that.
Just saying was to keep a qualified guy there.
To keep a qualified person there. That's, that's all I meant. And the senior center, I've visited a few times, it's a nice program. I think we should give it another shot. That's all I'm saying. Okay? Thank you.
And I'm happy to catch up with you after this and talk about the senior center, because your feedback is important. And I'd love to talk to you about that. Anybody else? Any more comments? You coming down to the microphone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is David Peineberg. I live at 75 Cotfish Hill Road. And I'd like to make a few comments about this tentative proposed purchase of this property on Greenwood Avenue. My wife and I have lived in town since 1995. And in that time, I can't remember any significant purchase that the town has done for outside activities. You know, this is going to be a pretty big town, there's almost twenty thousand people here. I see all the other municipalities in our area, in our geographic area, doing all these wonderful things for their residents, whether it's the city of Danbury, Brookfield, I can go on and on about all these things, you read about them. Bethel never does anything. Bethel never has any money. I'm on the parking recommission. I mean, I've tried to push for improvements, whether it's Parloa Park, whether it's pickleball courts. And we can't even get our tennis courts repaired properly. And we're just going to patch them. All these other towns are putting cement tennis courts in so that they can forget about them for twenty years. But no, we're going to do asphalt, we're going to patch it, and we may get five, we may get ten years out of it. So I really, I understand the importance of purchasing the property on Greenwood Avenue. But in my mind, you haven't taken care of your town residents first before you do something like that. So I strongly suggest to not approve this purchase. Thank you.
Sure. I would like to address the tennis court issue and kind of where we are. I was on the Board of Finance one year before I came into this position, and a number of years ago, we were not in such great shape. Ten million dollars in credit card debt, basically. And over the years, I think what we did is we tightened our belt, we changed to having a large capital non-recurring account. And we hit the pandemic, and over those years, yeah, we have, we have a capital issue, there's no question. I didn't, I wasn't aware how bad those tennis courts were until recently. And they're awful. And we've made a commitment to work on the tennis courts and get it where we need to. We're looking at opportunity for additional pickleball courts because at the end of the day, we want to do things for the residents, to have a vital community that's important. Community is a huge issue for us right now. With respect to Parloa Park, you know, the original plans were fairly significant. And I think when we looked at it, we did not want to put the splash pad there. Maybe we'll do a splash pad somewhere else next year, or someday. But we want to do something for Parloa. That's where we've approached the state for getting grants. We're still trying to hold back some ARPA money to do something with that. I'd like to, you know, replace the bathrooms, make some changes, clean it up. But then I'm hoping we get a larger grant for that. The other thing is, we haven't taken advantage of some of the larger grants we could get. We're working on it. We're working on a part-time grant writer to help us get some more money in the till. And I'll say this about the purchase, you know, there's, there's never a great time for something like this. We are looking out twenty years and saying, you know, as we need to do programs for the town, there's also indoor programs. And our largest community center right now is the library. You know, someday we may look at expanding that. Maybe we won't. But I'm, I'm not willing to give up on actually getting other properties, like we have Front Preserve, we have outdoor things. But I would like more outdoor options as well. I just don't think it's mutually exclusive. But I hope that answers your question, at least where we're looking. And I certainly respect where you stand on the issue, of course. Thank you, sir. So Chair of War Finance?
If I can just add one more thing. Not to go back, but the roads are very important to everybody. This is the second year in our operating budget that we're planning more than a million dollars with the roads, which is, is a big, a big task. And again, it's a million dollars paid, and that's a big, that's a big part of this budget. Also, SRR, it's our capital account. This year, in this budget, we decided to fill it a million dollars for capital projects. And that's a big, big jump. It was six-hundred-and-fifty thousand last year. We took advantage of a few things in the budget. So now we have more capital to do other projects. And the pickleball or tennis court is obviously in sight to get replaced, so, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, hi, Nico Jordan, 22 Wolfpits Road. Just regarding the Wells Fargo property, I just think it would be a real investment for the town. And we can't, or we shouldn't, in my opinion, turn it, turn down the opportunity to acquire land in, especially since it's in such an important kind of place contiguous with the library in the downtown area. It's got the parking lot, whatever. But land, you know, doesn't, can't really be created. So when you find a piece that's in an important spot and fits with the needs and purposes that you're looking for, then, which can be discussed, I assume, later, it sounds like, then it's a real opportunity that we should not miss because it's only going to increase in value as well. So if we, for some reason, decide to sell down the way, we're going to, should be able to turn a profit on it, I would think, as long as you guys lowball the bank, you know. But thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, gosh, sorry. Janey Cosden West. Do I have to say my full address?
No, you don't.
Okay, Kingswood, I'll just say that. I want to say for the Wells Fargo property, I have a question for you, Dan. Given that this town has been suffering, in my opinion, from a huge overbuilding problem and an influx of population as a result of that, what do you think the risk is to the town if we don't take this opportunity to buy the property?
Well, I mean, certainly, we know there are multiple developers interested in the property. From what I've heard, their interest, they're not looking to do the same thing as Nextdoor. It would be something where they put a building behind Wells Fargo. Residences, a few stories, or on the front of school street. Obviously, I have no way of knowing exactly what that would look like. Maybe three-quarters of the parking lot would, would go up, and we would certainly have, you know, more units.
Okay, that, that's a fear of mine. And I happen to agree with Nico saying before. It's a lot of money today. But if you're thinking about trying to buy this property ten years from today, it's going to be significantly more money. So seize the opportunity, if it's within the budget, and get that property, protect it, and then use it for something like senior programs or Chamber of Commerce, like we used to have the Chamber Creations on Greenwood Avenue, that was a wonderful space, or for municipal space. But my concern was about overbuilding, since I already know right across the street, above M&amp;T and English Drug, they're proposing a two-story apartment complex. It's just a lot for downtown, and that makes me scared, so, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Hi, Penny Kessler, 22 Spring Hill Lane. I want to piggyback on what was just said. I actually spoke about this at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a few weeks ago. If, if the town doesn't buy it, someone else is going to. And we know that there are developers who will take advantage of the state 830G statute, at which point everything comes out of planning and zoning control. And until that gets fixed on the state level, planning and zoning is really stuck. I like the idea that, that the town is looking forward. This is property, this is land. Land does not depreciate. And honestly, it's better that we have the land than that it goes to somebody else. The town has bought other pieces of property, the property across from Parloa, the property, I think, on Shelley, which went, I believe, into one of the preserves. So this is not something that's unusual, and I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. So any, any further discussion? Anybody like to come down and come to the microphone?
Gabriela Hernandez, 114 Knollwood Drive. I'm for the purchase of the Wells Fargo property. As others have said, I agree. Some suggestions with the space. Top priority, I think, would be making money off of it and having that revenue back into the town budget so that we can further fund other things. Another suggestion would be the senior center. I also agree that where the senior center is, is less than ideal. It certainly doesn't look welcoming with the dumpster right there. And not to mention the, the ADA compliance that sort of needs to take place or further improve so that people with different walking abilities can get in and out safely. In addition to that, another suggestion would be to have solar panels over the parking lot to diminish the heat sink that is created there because the sun just lives in pavement. So that would provide coverage, and it would also be generating energy to further, you know, energize the town and bring down the utility bill, if that's the case. So those are my suggestions for the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any further discussion? One more time, any further discussion? Okay, with that, due to the controversy of the vote, what I'd like to do is have a paddle vote. Those of you who have yellow, excuse me, what do you call them, cherries or pink paddles? When we do the vote, I'd like you to hold them up. It's a hand-raised vote. Okay? So with that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, hand up your paddle. And put them down. Of those opposed, hand up your paddle. And it looks like the, those in the affirmative have it, the motion passes. The town attorney, please, please, read the next resolution.
Shall the Town of Bethel transfer five-hundred-thousand dollars from the Tax Stabilization Fund to apply to...
Seeing none, one more time, going once, going twice. With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor of the resolution? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Please keep it down in the back. Was there any opposed? Okay, I think it was outside. Sentience, motion carries. Town attorney, please read resolution number six.
Shall the town of Bethel transfer $362,478.45 of the proceeds from the sales of 19, 20, 21, and 23 Tro Bridge Drive to an interest-bearing account under the supervision of the Economic Development Commission to further support the maintenance of Francis J. Business Park, as approved by the Board of Finance?
I accept a motion to, accept the resolution.
Penny Kessler.
Penny Kessler, a second?
Second.
On stage. Nancy Ryan.
Was it Nancy?
Yes.
Outstanding. Any further discussion? If you'd like to come down to the microphone, any questions? Seeing none? I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you just explain what this is about?
Happy to. Please.
Do you want to retract the vote?
Well, we're in the middle of it. That's fine, though. I think we're, I think we're all right. So, what this is, is when, when the town prepared the infrastructure over on the Francis J. Clark Park, of course, we, we did a great job and realized some profits. We had some money come from the state. We made the sales. We've had a significant amount of profit. At the same time, we realized that the park needs a long-term funding mechanism. It needs the ability for the EDC to take care of the park, you know, make it something that when we put these businesses in there, it works for them. So, what we've done with this is we're putting money into an account that will be administered by the EDC, and it's an interest-bearing account. So, over time, it'll, it'll gain a little interest. And this way, they can do all the things that it does to take care of the park. That work for you? You want to add anything?
Yeah. This, this money that we're putting, 360-plus thousand, it came from the property sales. Instead of cutting the grass, mending the, the drainage or, or different things in, in the park, instead of being our working capital each year, we decided to set this fund up so we actually take this money off of our operating budget. So, it's actually like a, a tax refund to everybody. They're going to be able to cut the grass, they're going to be able to do regular maintenance on the park with monies from properties to fund it. And so, that's what it was about. It was about so the taxpayers didn't keep paying for something, they can be self-sufficient. So, that's what this is about.
Excellent. So, now that we've presented further information, I'll open up once again. Any, any discussion? Any questions?
I'm sorry, Dan. Are we, what are we doing with the vote?
I, I think, we were halfway through the vote, and we didn't finish it.
Okay.
So, I think we're, I think we're back to discussion.
We're now into discussion.
Because it was interrupted. I don't think they cover that in Robert's rules, to be honest.
They really don't. We're, we're winging it here. Brad Colts, 1 Fairchild Drive. I've got a question about the appearance of potential conflict of interest. The chair of the EDC, who will have control of these funds, has a business in this park. I'm wondering why the town's Public Works, or perhaps Parks and Rec, isn't doing things like mowing the grass and taking care of the property that these funds are being designated for, and how the town is going to deal with the perception that perhaps some businesses will get favored treatment than others based on the arrangement there. Thank you.
Sure. I, I, I understand the concern, obviously. Ethics is an important part of everything we do as a elected or appointed group. You know, keep in mind that we're trying to make the park self-sustaining, and while he is the chair of the EDC, the truth is, it's a board. And, and they have to vote on everything that they do in that park. You know, right now, I think we're spending, was it $15,000 a year to do all the mowing out of the taxpayer dollar? You know, if there's any kind of, anything that goes on with the chair, the, the board would have to approve it, first off. And there's a good chance he, you know, wouldn't be elected chair again if there were a problem because the board elects a chair every year. But I do understand where you're coming from, and I think it's a, it's a point to be noted. Dan, yes, to Chair Finance.
I would just like to add, oop, here we lost the microphone. There it is. I'd like to add that this money only takes care of common areas that the town of Bethel owns. It doesn't mow in front of people's businesses, and it just takes care of the areas that the, the private taxpayer doesn't do. That's all this is about. It's just there are properties, and it's, if anybody knows it, it's about 12, 15 feet off the road, and to keep, to keep it appearance nice. Again, it, we don't have enough park and rec people, highway people, to, to keep it up nicely. And so, we just thought this would pay a private guy to take care of it and maybe attract more businesses to, to the town. So, it's only for the property that we own.
I'm also going to, I'm going to write down my name and where I live, just so you know. I'm the secretary for EDC, and I know that during discussions, I completely just lost my train of thought. We were talking about.
EDC.
EDC, yeah, the money and the maintenance of the mowing, yeah. Help me out, Janice.
Public safety is not easy.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should just stick to the notes. It's fine.
Thank you. Never a day goes by that doesn't happen to me. So, all right. So, are there any further, is there any further discussion from the audience?
Oh, I just remembered.
You have to wait. Okay. You might have to wait a second, but you have another.
Oh, come on, Tom. I just got my thought back.
Okay, then, so the, the chair recognizes the town clerk.
Okay.
Did you do it again? Tom, come on up. If I go up again, will that help?
Please vote for him in a few years.
Yeah. Tom Borishewicz, 9 Cannon Drive. In regards to F.J. Clark Park, are there any plans to improve recreation at the park, especially considering the sale of these properties? Some of them do block the entrances to one of the best walking areas there. I know you guys made two parking spots, but any other plans of development for recreational opportunities?
So, so as a matter of fact, yes. And we've, we've publicly talked about it in the Board of Selectment meeting. The, well, really, it's really the, the Planning and Zoning Commission had put forward the idea of creating a conservation commission to look at some of our, our properties around, including the, the park at Terre Haute, the rest of it behind it on the Danbury side. There's huge opportunities now to do something with that property to allow people to enjoy a recreation. I mean, there's trails already there, but we're very interested in doing something with it. So, we're, we're now kicking around the idea of how we might form a conservation commission to look at that and some of the other properties around town.
One more time.
Don't say no.
Lisa Berg, 5 Greenwood Avenue, Bethel. As secretary for the EDC, I've been privy to a lot of information as I've been taking notes for them. And what I don't know if anybody really understands is that this project came in way under budget, and we sold the properties for a good profit.